Okay, good evening. We'll go ahead and call this evening's Finance Committee meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from our meeting on January 7?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. McMurtry, second by Mrs. Stoll. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we'll move on to items for discussion, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Scrocky, because I think this might be a big night for you.
Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. So if you can indulge me, we're going to move the agenda a little bit tonight so we can start with the presentation, so we can get Mr. Trump on his way. And there's no relation, by the way. I'm going to introduce Mr. Zachary Trump. He is our interim Assistant Director of Business Administration. So Zach, as he's known by, works for Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, and he's basically on loan to North Penn School District. He's acting in the capacity of Mr. Linky when Mr. Linky was the Assistant Director of Business Administration. So I asked Mr. Trump to come tonight to talk about some of the things that are happening at a federal level and what potential impact that might have on North Penn School District with respect to our federal funding. So I have a high degree of respect for Mr. Trump, as well as his knowledge on federal programs, so I think he's well-suited to speak to the Finance Committee meeting tonight. So we're going to get Zach home. It's his daughter's 16th birthday. We're going to get Zach home tonight before there's too much snow on the ground so he can spend some more time with his daughter. So Zach, thanks for coming tonight.
Certainly. Thank you, Steve, and hello, everybody. I'm honored to be able to come and kind of talk through some of what's been going on. We know it's been a very crazy time with all of the executive orders that have happened and what that means for federal funding. So I think a good way to kind of frame this conversation is to start by looking at what exactly is federal funding look like here at North Penn. So Joanna, could you go to the next slide there? So as you see here, here's a breakdown of the 24-25 budgeted revenues for North Penn School District. You know, the vast majority of North Penn's funding comes through local sources. About 21% comes through the state, and then you can see there, 2% is actually federally funded, and that includes IDA. IDA, you'll notice there's a little note that says excluding IDA from the local revenue and including it in federal, and that's just because IDA, the way IDA flows is it goes through the state to the intermediate unit and then to the school district. So the school district budgets it and accounts for it as local, but it truly is a federal-funded program. Joanna, you want to jump to the next one? So to kind of continue this conversation, if we look at the different sources of these federal funds that are coming to North Penn, we'll start with IDA. IDA is the Individual with Disabilities Act. It was actually created by the Education for All Handicapped Child Act, EHA, of 1975, and the law's goals were to ensure that children with disabilities has access to free and appropriate education, which called FAP. And then it also aims to ensure that children with disabilities are kind of equipped for independent living as they grow. And then it's important to note that the U.S. Department of Education administers these funds, so they oversee the grants for this. Jump to the next one. Next, we have Title I, which is probably the second-largest federal funding source here at North Penn, at $2 million. Our Title I was created by the Elementary Secondary Education Act, ESA, of 1965. Also, the U.S. Department of Education oversees all of the Title funds, and there'll be a couple more that we go through. Title I provides financial aid to school districts for students, you know, in low-income families, the goal of which is to ensure that students meet the challenging academic standards, and it was created in response to the Civil Rights Act of 1964. And then it was amended by the Every Student Succeeds Act of 2015 to kind of just reauthorize it and kind of expand some of what the funding can be used for. Go ahead to the next one. Title II, which is for preparing, training, and recruiting high-quality teachers and principals, also was created by the ESA Act of 1965 and amended in 2015. And Title II provides financial aid to school districts to improve the quality and effectiveness of teachers and other school leaders and provide low-income and minority students with greater access to effective teachers, principals, and other school leaders. You know, not as much here, about a half million dollars, or $400,000, sorry, $400,000 of funding for Title II comes to North Penn. Go to the next one. And then we have Title III, like $350,000, and Title III is English Language Instruction for English Learners and Immigrant Students. It was also created by the ESA Act of 1965, and it provides supplemental funds to school districts to help improve the education of English learners and immigrant children, you know, people who English is not their first language and just need some assistance in learning or in language areas of learning. Go ahead to the next one. And then Title IV was created with the Higher Education Act of 1965. This is kind of where the Pell Grants for higher educations of learning, you know, higher institutions of learning comes from, and the purpose of this was to provide all students with access to well-rounded education, improve school conditions for student learning, and improve the use of technology in order to improve the academic achievement and digital literacy of all students. So that is how K-12 schools kind of get funding from Title IV. Also, like I had said before, all of the Title programs flow through the U.S. Department of Education. And then the final area that really is significant for North Penn is the School-Based Access Program. It was created in 1965 by Title 29 of the Social Security Act, and then it was kind of amended again in 1988 to allow for school districts to apply for reimbursement for these services. And then the Act itself allows schools, again, to apply for services for like reimbursement for services like physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy, mental health services, and the like. And it does represent a significant amount of funding for the district. Here is just kind of everything that's happened. It was a big fluster of activity around the end of January, beginning of February. It started off with the Office of, when the Office of Management and Budget at the federal government issued memorandum M2513, which in essence froze all federal fund payments, you know, for an undisclosed amount of time until the agencies could conduct and kind of get approved reviews of what all of the funding was for. It's kind of linked to the Department of Governmental Efficiency that President Trump kind of instituted in reviewing kind of where the federal government's spending its money. The, so that was on the 27th of January. On the 28th of January, several district or state attorneys filed lawsuit in the Federal Court of D.C. to kind of put a stay on implementing this order. Then the Office of Management and Budget tried to clarify and say, hey, the scope isn't as big as it was initially kind of thought to be based on the memorandum. Then the Office of Management and Budget on the 29th issued memorandum M2514, which in essence rescinded the previous memorandum, with the exception that the freeze was still being executed. On the 31st of January, in the Federal Court of Rhode Island, there was another lawsuit filed against it, at which point a judge, the judge in that court issued a restraining order preventing the, you know, preventing it from going into implementation. There was yet more lawsuits filed, and currently, we're at a point where the federal funding has begun to flow again. There's some issues with access and some other things that may or may not be linked to all of this. It's kind of unknown. For instance, the day that the first memorandum went out, there was issues in all 50 states issuing the Social Security and like medical access websites to do, you know, normal reporting. On top of all of this going on with the executive orders and the memorandums, the President has also stated very regularly that he intends to eliminate the U.S. Department of Education. So what does that kind of mean for North Penn and for all of the federal funding that comes to North Penn? So the first question really is, can the budget authority for federal programs under which funding is awarded to an organization be eliminated or substantially cut? Generally, yes. There is some authority through the Empoundment and Control Act of 1974 in which the President can kind of stop funding. However, it requires a majority in each chamber of the House, and they have to be in agree with it, and such reductions in budget authority are, however, generally limited to unobligated funds. And there's different terms that will come up in this conversation: obligated, unobligated, awarded. These are all significant, and they carry very significant meaning when it comes to federal funds. Unobligated federal funds kind of means, hey, this money has been designated in the federal budget but hasn't been awarded or issued or promised to any programs yet. So the second question that's really relevant is, can a specific federal grant be made to an organization be terminated on the grounds that, in the grant's current form, it is designed to achieve policy aims that are inconsistent with the policy aims of a new administration? So this kind of depends, right? So it depends on the terms of the specific grant and kind of the conditions that are set forth in the notice of award. So for all of the Title funding, those notice of awards are pretty solid in what they're for. They're very targeted to the exact language of the legislation that created the programs. So it would be my opinion that, no, you're not really going to see anything happen to those grants in regards to them being able to walk back money that was already awarded. There is some possibility on it, however, it's limited. It would take Congress to kind of act to be able to pull that money back. Go ahead to the next one. And then, to what extent can new terms and conditions oriented toward revised policy goals be placed on an existing federal grant? So Congress really has the ability to apply new terms, so, but it would take an act of Congress to do so. There's different ways they can do it, but generally, because all of the Title funds and all of the federal funds that flow to school districts, you know, and that North Penn receives, it's really pretty well enshrined, and the goals of those programs are pretty well established. They've been around for a while. And the other important thing to kind of take away from this is, they're not really what has been in the conversation of what this President is trying to do when it comes to federal funds. They're not for any of these items that he has pointed out to being that he believes need to be addressed or changed, so they're really not in the crosshairs of what this kind, of what he's trying to kind of pull money for or pull funding from. Want to go to the next one? So what does all of this mean really for North Penn here? Well, federal funds that we, that the school districts are receiving now, this year, in the '24-'25 year, were actually obligate, or they were designated in the federal budget that was passed in October of 2023. They were awarded to, obligated to the state in the spring of 2024, and then they were awarded to North Penn School District as of July 1, 2024. So those funds are pretty locked in. They're not really going to be taken away. Most likely, you might see some delays in kind of receipt of those funds from the state, but it's unlikely that the federal funding for this year will be reduced in any way. Most likely, again, it'll be just kind of delays in payment. So what does that mean for '24-'25 budgeting? Well, federal funds that would be for the '25-'26 school year were due to be designated in the federal budget that should have been passed this past October. Currently, they're on, it isn't passed yet. They're still in kind of negotiations on it. They're due to be obligated to the state at some point in the coming spring. Generally, it's around March-April timeframe that the state gets the award and then notifies school districts of what their allocation is, and then at, as of July 1, 2024, or 2025, sorry, they would then be, you know, awarded to the district. So again, it's unlikely that those projects are going to really be affected by anything that's going on. It's more likely that, again, just kind of the delays in payment, maybe a little delay in the award, potentially a slightly reduced reward, but I really, based on everything I've read and the research I've done, I don't really foresee that being coming to fruition. It most likely just seems that there's going to be delays in processes more than anything. And kind of important to note is, the district here, Steve and all, in the budgeting process, has budgeted like a flat rate for next year. So no increase, no decrease, just kind of a flat rate, which is really the safe road to go when it comes to federal funding in general, but particularly in this kind of time of turmoil. So, big picture, North Penn's federal funding all comes from the ESA, ATA, SBA grant of 196, all of which, 1965, IDA, 1975. Why is this relevant? Why are dates relevant? Well, the U.S. Department of Education was created in 1979, so all of this funding existed prior to the U.S. Department of Education. What does that mean? Well, okay, worst-case scenario, the U.S. Department of Education goes away. How did this, how, what happens to this funding? Well, nothing really happens to the money because it was designated, or it was enshrined in legislation long before U.S. Department of Education was around. So it flowed prior. It will have to find a new route to kind of flow and be managed, but it most likely won't be affected by U.S., anything that happens at the U.S. Department of Ed. What would it take for that to be affected? Well, it would take an act of Congress to address those specific acts and do changes. In those acts of Congress, they actually designated this money to school districts because of mandated costs that school districts now have to cover. For instance, special education costs. There's mandates on certain costs that have to be absorbed by the school district, and for instance, IDA was designated or created and designated to alleviate that pressure for school districts. What else does it mean, or what would happen, what would need to happen in order for the Department of Education to go away at the state or at the federal level? Well, again, it's going to take an act of Congress. The Office of the President doesn't hold sole authority to do away with it because it was created in legislature. It was public law '96-'88, and again, 1979. I believe it was Carter administration that signed it into law. It was signed in at '79. It was started in 1980. All of this is going to continuously be fluid. There's going to be a lot of information to come out of it. It's going to say one thing and then another. The important thing is to just take a breath on it. It's not a thing to panic. There's a lot going on. We're going to hear a lot more, but really, the big takeaway is there's going to be delays in receiving funding, but most likely not loss of funding specifically in the short term. Long term's a different scenario. Two years out is really unknowable at this time, but for anything to kind of happen in the two-year timeframe, it, you know, that takes a lot to do. Further out, you have Congress, and all acts can happen to make changes. So that's kind of what I have for you. I will take a moment to say that all of the information that I presented on is publicly available, so if you have any questions, please do research, look into it. Before I answer any questions, I will just address the most poignant one. My name is Zach Trump. I am not related to the President, so I do not have inside information or any inside avenues for you. I apologize for that, but I would certainly answer any questions that you have.
That was such a perfect framing, both from a civics perspective but from a historical perspective, and I know we're going to have lots of questions, so maybe we'll start with Mr. Fusco.
Thank you. And actually, I think my question's probably more directed at Mr. Scrocky. In this presentation, it states that the federal government provides roughly $2.7 million toward our special education expenses. IDEA is supposed to afford up to 40% of special education budgets in the country, which it has always fallen very, very short of, but that number of $2.7 million, what is that in regard to the percentage that we are spending on special education in our budget?
So I'm just going to go off of memory. Total special ed budget, the 1,200 function in the accounting manual, somewhere around $52 million. So, Dr. Bauer, you're the math major. $2.7 million divided by 52 is, that's a small number, right?
Is that like 2% or 4%?
Yep, 1. something percent.
Something percent. So, here's another math question for you, Mr. Scrocky. Had we taken or considered taking the special education exemptions for the Act I index, what would that have been and how much of this would have been covered through that action? I know that it's, we're covered in this Act budget, but like moving forward, should this become an issue, and that's an option, if this is approximately what we were receiving from the federal government, how much of that would be potentially able to be recouped through that index? Ask.
Yeah, Mr. Fusco, the last time I did that calculation, because as a reminder, the Board did elect to pass a resolution not to exceed the Act I index for the last couple of years, but it's probably been two years since I did that calculation, and it was somewhere around $4,000 to $500,000 would be generated by the special ed exception.
So about 20% of what we'd be losing there. Okay, thank you.
So if the federal government stops giving us these funds, that to me, from my understanding, is that we're going to have to tax our local taxpayers to make up for those lost funds. Is that a correct statement?
Well, when you look at the all-in federal funds that Mr. Trump shared with you, I mean, there is several million dollars, and so I think a question becomes, if the desire of the Board is to maintain the same level of services, the additional funding needs to come from somewhere. And since the vast majority of our revenues come from local sources, that means taxes, yes, but you're still capped by that Act I index, and perhaps you don't have the ability to tax enough to make up all the federal revenue if the, all the federal revenue would disappear tomorrow.
So what you're saying is, we would have to cut services to specific portions of our population if we can't raise the revenue that we need?
In all likelihood, yes.
Actually, it sounds more like it's either or, or probably a mix of both: cut services, raise taxes higher, and generally, yeah.
Mr. Scrocky, thank you so much for your description of Title IV and associating with that with the Pell Grant. I think I'm, we all have some level of familiarity with the Pell Grant, but how, Mr. Scrocky, can you tell us a little bit about how Title IV funds are used specifically within the district?
I actually can't. I don't have that detail.
Sorry.
To provide that, so.
So, in general, our Title II and Title IV, this is a very broad umbrella.
Got it.
Is utilized for professional development. So learning coach positions, professional development, materials and resources, but in general, Dr. Waters oversees federal programs and Dr. Hart, but PD.
So I also just want to thank you two for pointing out to that process and the timeline of how funds flow, right, and that there is a very thoughtful methodology of that. It goes from the federal government to the state. It's incorporated into the state budget, then it, the state then passes it to the Department of Ed, and then it's awarded. So I think too, I think I've gotten kind of comments from the general public too about the news about, you know, the possible Department of Ed, but I've also gotten questions about the continuing resolution and the fact that we are also operating without a full budget until, and I think the CR gets us through March, and so knowing that that is how this works is very helpful. Within a budget year, you said, like with a continuing resolution, if it, if we're operating on, you know, segment by segment of a federal budget, does the federal government award a state a portion of those Title funds to get them through, or do they do it as a lump sum at the beginning of the year? How would that work if we are continuing to operate in a CR?
So it really depends on how Congress decides to do it. It could be a lump sum, and they make that commitment at the beginning and just say, hey, we're not touching it, or it could be patchwork where they do kind of pay portions out. It's important to remember, again, all of these funds are legislatively obligated, so Congress had said, hey, we are going to put this into our budget and pay this money out to the states every year. So generally, it's not something that is a part of those continuing resolution conversations. That's more around the discretionary funding that gets built into the federal budget.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
Hi. So thanks for the presentation. I did learn a lot. Two questions, and actually, one question is from, I don't, I think it was Mr. Rush, and Mr. Scrocky responded. In terms of if there would have to be tax increases potentially and changes to existing programs, does the administration have a plan on the shelf or will have a plan on the shelf in anticipation of it sooner than later? So it's not, you know, while we're thinking about it methodically and you can just collaborate with everyone, if that can happen, if that's really a question. And then the second piece is around the continued monitoring and the frequency, the speed at which things are changing in terms of keeping the Board updated rather, you know, because we don't meet but once a month.
Sure.
And is there a mechanism that you could develop for us to be updated email or whatever if it's really a high-level learn that we should be aware of, not that action would be taken? Just, just a...
You want to go first, Zach, or you want me to?
Well, I was just going to say around the timing of things happening, we're getting information very quickly.
Yeah.
But the process, understand that the process with federal money is very slow. So anything that's going to happen, we have to, you know, school districts, the intermediate units, all of them have to work with the state because this money really flows through the state. So we would kind of take the lead from, hey, what is the state telling us is going on right now, and what is the timeframe? So just for timing-wise, it's not, it feels emergent, but it generally, you have some time to adjust, and it takes a little bit of process. It's a very large machine, and it takes time to start up and get up and then slow down as well, so.
Her inertia's big.
Right, right. So I wouldn't be concerned that, hey, tomorrow you find out there's no federal funds. That's highly unlikely.
Right. I just want to make sure that we, when it happens, that we already have our what-if scenarios in place if it's realistic. Again, things are changing so fast. I'm not, I don't want to put unreasonable requests out there, but certainly, okay, what if this happens? You know, there's got to be some thought about things that seem to be likely to occur or not occur.
Sure. So I would defer to Dr. Bauer or Mr. Scrocky on those types of plans.
I'm just expressing it. And then I have a question. Back on Slide 8, there was a Title mentioned, and I didn't look at the slide, but I think you, believe you said Title 29, and I don't know if there is a Title. Is it 19?
Yeah, XIX is 19.
Sorry.
You did say 29.
I did.
And I wasn't, I'm not smart in this stuff, so I thought, okay, is it a 29? And I don't, you know, okay.
I apologize.
No apology. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you again.
Mr. Trump, happy birthday to your daughter.
Please, yeah, please send her our best, too, and drive safe home.
Okay, we're going to move back to items being recommended for action meeting. The first item we have are budget transfers for January. They totaled $219,635.05, and as per the usual, we have movement of funds due to ensuring that we have money in individual line items and to make sure that individual line items are being charged to the proper account. So we're asking for placement on this on the February 20 action meeting agenda, please.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mrs. Stoll. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right. This is my last chance to talk about the tax rebate program here in North Penn School District. It's one of my favorite topics to talk about, but we do have a mission in front of us tonight, and that is consideration of a percentage match of the state program for the '25-'26 fiscal year. So, go ahead, Joanna. Just to recap, we're in our seventh year now of the rebate program, and this was started for one primary reason, and that was to provide tax relief to those that have the greatest need in the community by simply piggybacking off of an existing program. That's the Pennsylvania Property Tax and Rent Rebate Program. So the seventh year. I think the last count, we have about 30 school districts in the state that have replicated our exact program. the state that have replicated our exact program. And we've been able to deliver rebates to thousands of applicants during that seven-year period. Again, this all started with a question by school director Susan Leonard back somewhere around twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen when she asked the question. The Pennsylvania Legislature has been talking about property tax reform since the nineteen eighties and has not been able to deliver property tax reform. Isn't there something we can do at the local level to help out those that are in the greatest need? And that's how this program was developed. So again, our objective tonight is to have conversation to see if we can come to a consensus with the twenty-five, twenty-six match of the state program. So just quickly, for those watching tonight, what this program means and what the state program, how that system works. The Pennsylvania Property Tax and Rent Rebate Program at the state level is administered by the Department of Revenue. It's been around since the nineteen seventies and it's funded by lottery and gaming proceeds. And because the lottery and gaming proceeds have been generating a lot of revenue over the past couple of years, the program dramatically expanded this past year. The household, household income limit was raised to forty-six thousand, five hundred twenty dollars and the amount of the rebates was also dramatically increased. To be eligible for the program at the state level, you need to be age sixty-five or older, be a widower or widower, age fifty or older, or eighteen years of age and older and be permanently disabled. So it's a four-tier breakdown based on household income. And household income, basically everything counts, including social security, except only one half of social security is counted. But all other sources of income, including investment income, pension income, it's all counted towards that household income. So individuals at the lower end of the income from zero to eight thousand, two hundred seventy are eligible for a state rebate of a thousand dollars. Those up to forty-five thousand dollars, the rebate amount is three hundred eighty. And that forty-five thousand dollars, that is, all these figures are, are being increased slightly. They're being adjusted annually now for inflation, whereas in the past, it was a flat amount and it didn't increase for like fifteen, twenty years. Now they're being indexed each year to expand the amount of family income each year. So a little history of our program now, again, in seven years, the humble beginnings back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, it started out with a twenty-five percent match of the state program only for property owners. The second year, it expanded to include renters and those hybrid properties. Those hybrid properties are situations where individuals own the home, typically a manufactured mobile home, and they rent the land on which it sits. So a good example of that would be in the Chaminie Falls. We consider them hybrid. They pay rent and they pay property tax. They pay rent on the land and they pay property tax on the actual manufactured home. Twenty twenty, twenty-one, supplements were added. Individuals that pay real estate taxes that represent fifteen percent or more of their household income can get a supplement. It's a fifty percent supplement. So for example, if you receive a one thousand dollar rebate and your taxes are more than fifteen percent of your income, you can get an additional five hundred dollars, giving you a total of one thousand, five hundred dollars in a rebate from the state. Twenty twenty-three, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, I should say, there was a boost that year. You might recall that the governor, Governor Wolf, who actually visited the Lansdale Y and we had a couple of board members there for pictures, Mrs. Stoll, I believe you were there that day, right? The governor used federal COVID money to provide additional dollars for the state rebate program that year. So that was substantial. And so North Penn matched not only the base amount of the state, but the boost that was given by Governor Wolf at the time. And resulted that one year, I think there were about fifty individuals, fifty households in North Penn School District that had one hundred percent of their property taxes rebated through the state and North Penn School District. That was an awesome number to have. Just to give you an idea of the number of applications we've had over the years, we started out in year one at four hundred fifty-three, which is still a pretty tremendous amount. We've already broken the all-time record this fiscal year. We've hit six hundred sixteen applications already this year, and I'm pretty confident we'll be well over seven hundred by the end of the year. So why so many applications this year? A couple of reasons. I think the primary reason is the household income limit was expanded this past year. It was greatly expanded. More dollars were put in the program because of the enhanced gaming money, so we've seen a record number of applications this year. You might recall, last year, the big dilemma was because the state increased the, the dollars, increased the rebate amount, increased the household income. Our big question last year is where should that percentage be set? And we had a lot of discussion, I think over a couple of meetings last year. We landed on sixty percent. So that's sixty percent rebate so far has generated two hundred fifteen thousand dollars in rebate so far this year, two hundred fifteen thousand dollars this year. So I think we're on a pace right now, by the end of the year, we're probably going to be around, somewhere around two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars at the end of the fiscal year. All right, just to give you an idea of the breakdown of the applicants, seventy-eight percent of our applicants are homeowners, eleven percent renters, eleven percent hybrid. Mr. Rush, you have a question?
So when we talk about the two hundred and eighty or two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, we're talking about one-tenth of one percent of our budget. So it's minuscule amount of our budget, right?
Very small amount of our total budget, but I can tell you that those individuals that receive a rebate, it means a lot to them. I know many board members have to hand-delivered checks over the years. Dr. Bauer and I have hand-delivered checks. And when you hear stories about, I'm getting a three, four, or five hundred dollar rebate check and now I can get my medication. And when you shake the hands of that individual and see the tears in their eyes, small fraction of our budget, but it means the world to the individuals that are actually receiving these rebates. I don't know, Dr. Bauer, I mean, that was about two years ago that we hand-delivered that. I mean, that was such a humbling experience and really drove home the reason for the program. And I like, I was so proud to be able to hand those checks out that day, and I just want to thank the board for continuing this program. Hopefully it will continue in another year because it really means a lot to people that really need the money.
The, one that really like stuck with me, Steve, was, I think it was a lady and her brother lived in an apartment and they had gotten bad news about their pet that day and couldn't afford the care for their pet, and the check allowed them to do that. Yeah.
Okay, so now if we look globally at North Penn School District, we get de-identified data from the state. We don't know where individuals live, we don't know names, we don't even know municipalities, we only know totals. So this is a chart showing the number of state rebates given to individuals that reside in North Penn School District. So back in twenty seventeen, when I, we started the program here, there was two thousand four hundred ten individuals in North Penn that received a state rebate. And that number declined in twenty twenty-three to fifteen ninety-one. So it was a steady decline each year. And I think the simple reason for that is up until last year, the state did not increase the household income guidelines. So year after year after year, more people fell out of the income eligibility guideline. So less people applying, less people receiving rebates. I think once we get to twenty twenty-four data, you're going to see a major spike in that number, probably to take it back to the twenty seventeen number. And then the same logic applies in terms of dollars actually rebated by the state. It was over a million dollars back in twenty seventeen and it dropped to seven hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three. Same story, I think we're going to see a major spike when we get that data. That data is refreshed every July, so July of twenty-five, we'll get the data from twenty So this is a nice chart. We like to compare what the average tax increase was for the average homestead in North Penn compared to the average rebate. Now granted, not everyone in home, in North Penn School District is eligible for the tax rebate, but this takes a look at those individuals that are eligible for the rebate, how that compares to the tax increase. So last year, for example, twenty-four, twenty-five, or current, or most previous fiscal year, the average rebate in North Penn for the program was three hundred fifty dollars. I think my legend got cut off. Yellow is the tax rebate, blue is the tax increase. So three hundred fifty dollars was the average rebate, one hundred ninety-seven dollars was the average tax increase. The previous year, twenty-three, twenty-four, three hundred ninety-six dollars was the rebate, one hundred seventy-three dollars was the tax increase. And the previous year was much higher, that was the year of the boost, five twenty-one versus one thirty-nine. So I think the point with this is, especially for the last couple of years, the rebate amount has more than offset any tax increase that was levied. So again, that's another reason for appreciation for the people that receive this. Mr. Rush?
And, and the reason the rebate went down in twenty-four, twenty-five is because we figured in the amount of the increase that the state was giving the people and we added our rebate on top of that and we made sure that the people were getting a, a, a big increase in the amount of rebate that they got, but it, it took a smaller amount out of our budget per person.
Right. Correct. Thank you. Okay, so now we get to the budget talk, like it's, sometimes it's like a nebula, well, how do you come up with a budget figure? So we, we simply take the data from the state, the total payments made by the state to North Penn residents. We multiply that by the projected participation rate and we multiply that by the reimbursement percentage, the match, the percentage match, and that's our budget amount. So this year, we have approximately three hundred ten thousand dollars budgeted, three oh one, two hundred to be precise. And, you know, the projected participation rate, for years, we were projecting a fifty percent participation rate. We've never come close to that. We always seem to be hovering like somewhere around thirty percent-ish. For this most recent budget year, we lowered it from fifty to forty percent. And the rebate was set by the board last year at sixty percent and that yielded the three hundred and one thousand, two hundred dollar figure. We were a little unsure of that sixty percent figure again because this is the first year now that we're giving rebates based on this larger amounts from the state and higher thresholds for the household income. So the question is, you know, really, it's one simple question to be able to develop the resolution, and that is where should the rebate percentage, the match, where should that be set for the upcoming year? So I threw a couple of scenarios on the board. The first one is what we have in the current year. You could say, okay, we're going to keep everything the same. Everything the same, we're going to assume a third, a forty percent participation rate, sixty percent match, it comes out to the same, three oh one, two thirteen, no increase over the current year budget. So looking at things a little bit differently, if we say, well, we realize that we've never been able to reach fifty percent, we've never been able to reach forty percent, thirty-five percent is probably more realistic. Let's say we kept it at, or lowered it to thirty-five percent, the projected participation. And that projected participation, again, is simply how many people apply to our program versus how many people are receiving a rebate from the state. We kept the rebate at sixty percent, that would actually lower our budget amount to two hundred sixty-three thousand dollars, a thirty-seven thousand dollar reduction. So different way of looking at it. Let's say we kept the assumption at forty percent, forty percent of those eligible apply, and the rebate was boosted to seventy percent. Well, that would increase the budget by about fifty thousand dollars. However, one could argue that, okay, thirty-five percent is more realistic. So how can we keep the budget about where it is now and still provide a boost and be a little more realistic with the number of individuals that apply? So that's what I was trying to get at with the last row. The last row is let's reduce, you know, consider reducing the participation rate to what it's, what it's been, more realistic, boost the actual match to seventy percent, and it yields an additional sixty-two hundred dollars in the budget, you know, roughly where we're at now. And we can do every iteration in between. We can assume a thirty-six percent participation rate, a sixty-five percent match, you know, we can do all kinds of iterations, but I tried to keep the numbers like whole numbers, you know, fives or zeros and come up with a number that was fairly close to what our budget figure is, and that's the bottom row. The third row, to enhance it, you know, you could say that, well, maybe we'll have more people participate next year. Again, through all the efforts that we've done, and we have bumped up the participation, I really don't foresee getting to a forty percent level with all the efforts that we've done. For whatever reason, even though I talk about it to death, even though we do road shows and presentations and legislative fairs and all that, you know, I, I think there's just a point where, for some reason unbeknownst to me, there's sixty-five percent of the households that get a state rebate that don't know about our program or don't take the time to fill out our one-page application. I don't understand it, but this is what our reality is seven years into the program. So the fourth row is probably the more realistic scenario, and believe me, like, I'm not recommending seventy. If the board would like to consider eighty or ninety, we'll do the calculation for that and let you know what that additional cost is. But seventy percent, it's a boost, yet it keeps the budget amount relative to where it is now.
Just a quick question, is, even if we're not getting to the, the forty percent, fifty percent we've projected, does the trend line continue to go up or is it just flat?
It's, it's ticking up a little bit.
Right.
Yeah, it's ticking up a little bit, but we're not going by five and ten percent increases a year.
Right. And it's important for the public, I guess, to understand that this is what we're budgeting for, but if we don't hit that amount, it ends up going back into the general fund anyway. So it's really about how we're accounting for it, not necessarily the difference in what we're going to actually spend on the program. That'll be determined by the number of people who participate based on whatever percentage we land on.
I'd love to have a year where you budget X amount and you spend more than that.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be actually nice. Now this year, we have three hundred one thousand dollars budgeted, and I'm thinking that we're probably going to land somewhere around two hundred seventy-five, two hundred eighty thousand when the year is closed out.
Okay.
Which means, you know, twenty-five, thirty thousand-ish left on the table, unspent.
Okay.
And I, I'd like people to understand that these are the poorest people in our district and they are still paying school taxes to the school districts. It's not like we're giving them money that, out of other people's pockets, we're just returning some of the money that they paid us to educate our students.
Yeah, they're still paying taxes, and that's the thing with the program. You have to pay taxes first and you get a rebate after the fact. It's a year after the fact. It's not like you get a credit on your taxes, it's not like you don't pay your taxes. Oh, no, you pay your taxes and then the next year, you file for the rebate. You know, and the one message I have too, to try to encourage participation, for anyone that might be watching tonight, you probably have a relative, a friend, a neighbor in the community that's receiving a rebate from the state. So if you know that individual or suspect of an individual, you say, hey, you know, if you're receiving a rebate from the state, North Penn has a rebate program as well, you can also get money from North Penn School District. And so far this year, we've had probably another dozen people that between the state rebate and the North Penn rebate have had a hundred percent of their property taxes rebated to them. That's true property tax relief. That's not this notion where, oh, yeah, we're going to lower property taxes, but we're going to raise your state income tax or your personal income tax. No, when you pay your taxes and you get a hundred percent back with no strings attached, that's true property tax relief. And that's what we're delivering at a local level to some individuals.
Thanks, Mr. Skrocky. So last year, I know that we waited, if I recall, for the state, and that's why we dropped it, we decreed, no, dropped it, decreased the percentage back to sixty. Am I, do I recall that right?
Yes.
Okay. So my, and we know where we're headed this year, it's not an unknown, correct?
Correct.
So I personally, I don't know what anyone else thinks, would like to try and go back to the percentages prior to last year. So we're proposing sixty and I'm, no, we're proposing possibly seventy percent, correct? Whether it be a forty percent or a thirty-five percent participation rate?
So in twenty-three, twenty-four, it was at ninety. That was the year.
Right, and that was, we loved it, but then it was the unknown. So I know I personally wanted ninety last year, but we went to sixty and that is a prudent thing to do. But now, all right, I'm back and I would like to see about possibly going to eighty percent or eighty-five percent and not the seventy. Just my two cents.
If we would do that, Steve, would that just add another fifty thousand dollars onto the pro, cost of the program?
I'm going to tell you right now, so we're going to use thirty-five percent as participation rate, right? So the total is three hundred fifty-one thousand dollars.
Roughly fifty thousand dollar increase from the.
Eight percent, correct. Roughly a fifty thousand dollar increase from where we're at. That's taking what projected rebates are from the state times point three five, times point eight, three hundred fifty-one thousand, four hundred dollars. Now obviously, if we change the assumption to forty percent participation, that raises the figure again, but, I mean, I, I feel comfortable with the thirty-five percent. I mean, we have a longstanding history now, we know we've been increasing it every year, but I don't think we will hit forty percent next year. So I, I think if you want to go to eighty- hit forty percent next year. So I, I think if you want to go to eighty percent reimbursement number, I think a three hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred dollar budget figure is pretty good.
So while I'm still open to the percentage, the rebate itself, I'll just say the thirty-five percent I'm comfortable with. So I don't know if my colleagues want to chime in on that one first and then we can move on to the second part, but I'm with you on that, Steve. I'm comfortable with the thirty-five percent participation rate.
Clarification question. So do we know right now if the state is going to further expand the range, which would make more people eligible?
So the applications are out already.
Okay.
Okay. So it'll be based on twenty-twenty-
Okay.
-four taxes and they have indexed already what the income brackets are.
Okay.
So they did increase, it was slightly, it was a few hundred dollars. So I don't think that's going to generate like a new influx of, you know, hundreds and hundreds of new people being eligible. It might pick up a few, but a few might drop off too as their incomes might rise for whatever reason, they might drop off. So the nice thing about it is indexed every year. We're not going to have a situation where fifteen, twenty years go by and it's the same income thresholds. They will go up a few hundred dollars each year.
Okay. I was just wondering if that had the possibility to Mr. Fusco's question of changing the thirty-five percent?
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
I think as many new people that might be eligible because the income thresholds were increased by a few hundred, you might see an equal number drop off because maybe their pension increased that year or maybe they have additional investment income and now all of a sudden they go above what the threshold is and they drop out.
I think we're also fairly confident and comfortable with the outreach activities that we have in place. And so keeping that at thirty-five, I think is also, I think that's a pretty good standard too. I think the only way to increase it would be to incentivize or increase the return and then let that be the word of mouth that might go forward.
Okay, hearing, we'll go with the thirty-five percent. We'll go with eighty percent?
Any concerns about that? Any questions? Okay.
What I'll do then is pending a motion and action on this, we'll prepare the resolution then for the February action meeting. And that way it'll be set. We can start communication that we're going from sixty percent up to eighty percent next year and start drumming up interest now. And we'll communicate that to all of our legislative offices because they've been an absolute tremendous help and partnering with us in getting the word out. So yeah, kudos to every legislative office we have here in North Penn School District. Joanna works closely with them. A lot of times when information is missing, our legislative offices are right on the horn with Department of Revenue. They have a pathway to Department of Revenue that we don't have access to. So thank you to our local legislators as well. So again, our recommendation then is to proceed with the eighty percent match and have this placed in the February action meeting, please.
Thank you. So do I have a motion and a second to move this forward?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, second by Mr. McBane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Skrocky, thank you so much for all of your efforts on this and we promise to be good stewards of this program moving forward.
Thank you. I appreciate your support.
I will also say too that for us Board Service, we often will talk about that our recognition and our reward is graduation day, but also delivering the rebate checks. Also cut falls in the top three, school board service moments for me as well. So we know the impact. We've been able to hand that check over, so we appreciate and we'll keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so considering our work session starts in one minute, I have what, four or five items to cover yet, we're gonna, we're gonna move quickly. Next item recommended for action at the February twentieth action meeting is Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Budget. This is the member services budget. There's three parts to it, government relations, Office of Organizational and Professional Learning, and Office of Technology Services. So this is a small fraction of the overall MCIU budget. I think it's somewhere around, I don't know, one percent of the overall IU operations, but North Penn shares in that, as do all the other school districts in Montgomery County. So the North Penn share for the twenty-five, twenty-six year would be two hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars. That's a four percent increase, eight thousand, four hundred and seven dollar increase. And this was already approved by the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors and we're recommending placement on the February twentieth action meeting for approval as well.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Next item being recommended for the action meeting are the number of tax liens for the twenty-twenty-four year. So what these tax liens are, our real estate taxes are issued in July of each year and any individual that has not paid the real estate taxes by the end of December, we turn over those properties to the Montgomery County Tax Claim Bureau and they perform the delinquent collection at that point in time. They add additional penalties and interest, but something we're particularly interested in because we rather would have the revenue upfront by December as opposed to waiting for the collection through the Tax Claim Bureau. And the collection through the Tax Claim Bureau could take several years, you know, depending on the situation on the particular property. So in terms of the number of properties, and we will have a full list showing individual property information that we'll have attached to the resolution on the February twentieth agenda. But in terms of the total properties, we did see a decrease in the number of properties that were delinquent this year. Thirty-seven fewer properties this year compared to, compared to last year. That seems like good news, right? But we go to the next chart. And the total dollar amount, there was actually a three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollar increase in the amount of money that was turned over. So what that's an indication of is that there were fewer properties turned over for delinquent collection, but the value of those properties were higher than they were last year. So larger properties and sometimes it can take just one or two commercial properties that are unpaid to boost that number. But the total again is three hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. That's a twenty-three point six percent increase over the previous year in terms of dollars. One thing is certain, at some point in the future, we will get that money, we will collect that money because a property can't sell when a lien is placed on the property. And that's what happens through this delinquent process. A lien is placed on the property, the lien must be satisfied before a property can actually transfer to another owner. And if the individual that is in delinquent status, if they basically don't make any effort to pay, no payment plan or no communication with tax claim, if a couple of years go by, you know, there is a potential there could be a share of sale on the property if nothing happens over a several-year period. That typically does not happen though. There's typically a payment plan worked out and the individual does pay that off. So again, we're recommending approval. We had, there's a January deadline, so with the sinking of our board meetings, we're never able to present this list before. We have to turn it over to tax claims, so we're going to ask for a ratification of this at the February meeting.
Okay, do I have a motion and a second to move this forward?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Stole, second by Mr. Fusco. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we're gonna move back now to information items. We have a couple information items. First, as a follow-up to our discussion on the movie lot sales agreement that we had in January, in January, the board authorized an extension of the due diligence period. That was amendment number two of the sales agreement. And the due diligence period now is March third. Based on our discussion at the finance meeting, I did reach out to Polte, the individual that we have a, the developer that we have a contract with, and asked a simple question, do you anticipate any additional extensions? Or are you in a good place and you feel that the March third date, you'll be able to meet the due diligence period by March third? I asked twice, two weeks ago and again today. And both times the response was, we feel confident we can meet the due diligence period on March third. What happens after that, they do need to place money in escrow, so things get a little more serious because nothing is in escrow right now. So crossing the threshold of due diligence is a really important criteria in the sales agreement. So again, Polte has indicated that they don't feel another extension is needed. Also, we had a court hearing to get the approval of sale for the movie lots on January twenty-seventh and we received notice last week that the judge did approve our sale of the movie lots. And it really boiled down to the fact that we had affidavits from both appraisers saying that the value, the sales price value is, is well in excess of what they felt was the appraised value for the property. So that's really what the judge needed to hear and the judge issued the court order that we have the authority now to continue with the sale. So that's good news. Things will continue to progress on. Once we hit March third, that's when Polte will need to put money into escrow. Okay, questions about that? All right, hearing none. Moving on to high school financing structure. We had a presentation at the January Finance Committee meeting. We talked at length about a couple different options for financing phase one, specifically calendar year twenty-twenty-five of phase one of the high school project. And the draw schedule is estimated to be twenty million dollars in twenty-twenty-five. The question was borrow no money, borrow fifteen million dollars or borrow ten million dollars. And the consensus was at that meeting to borrow ten million dollars. So just revisiting it to make sure the committee's still on the same page with the ten million dollar borrowing. Financially, that was actually the most advantageous of the three scenarios that we examined in detail. So if that's the recommendation, we have a parameters resolution that's on the work session tonight, which sets a ceiling of fifteen million dollars. That doesn't mean fifteen million will be borrowed. If the direction continues to be ten million dollars, we'll give that direction to our financial advisors. And as we're going to start preparing the documents and the ratings call with Moody's, we'll let everyone know that ten million is going to be the anticipated borrowing. So again, just to revisit to make sure we're on the same page with the ten million dollars. That would be a, a bank qualified bond. Bank qualifies ten million dollars or less and you typically get preferential rates when you have a BQ, as they call it, bank qualified a BQ deal.
Any comments or questions? Okay, same number? We're excited. Yes, we're very much looking forward to this next phase, so thank you.
And I want to let you know the ratings call with Moody's is going to be on February nineteenth. Because of scheduling conflicts and considering my end date is coming up soon, Moody's was not able to do a site visit. So it's going to be via phone on February nineteenth. That's going to be the ratings call. Okay? Next item for information is the governor's twenty-five, twenty-six budget address. I'm going to cut right to the chase and talk about how it impacts North Penn School District. North Penn School District, for our basic education funding, we're looking at a three hundred and forty-six thousand dollar increase for the upcoming year. It's one point eight six percent increase. For the current year, we had a one point eight million dollar increase or ten point seven two percent. So we're thankful for any increase, but it is substantially lower than what we had in the current year. One point eight million dollars in the current year and we're going to go to three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars was being proposed by the governor. And the governor's proposal, of course, is simply a starting point. The final budget will be worked out through the Pennsylvania Legislature. Our special ed subsidy will increase by two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. That's three point one one percent. The current year increase was four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars or six point seven percent. So our current, current year increase was, was pretty much double what we're, was being proposed for next year. Okay, cyber reform on the table again. It's been on the table for how many years? At least ten years. So there's proposed a static eight thousand dollar per student flat rate in the Commonwealth. That was proposed last year as well. That didn't happen. North Penn, if enacted, North Penn's would save two point two million dollars, two point two million dollars if there was a flat eight thousand dollar cyber rate. The rate we're paying now to cyber schools is about seventeen thousand dollars for a regular education student. What's happening with that spread between eight thousand and seventeen thousand? Advertising, gift cards, phones, parade floats, cars, lavish meals, buying buildings when you're a cyber school. In fact, the largest cyber school-
It's your last chance.
My last chance. The largest cyber school in Pennsylvania, Commonwealth Charter Academy, CCA, I think they have about twenty thousand students now. They have purchased over twenty brick and mortar buildings in the last five years. Why would a cyber school need over twenty buildings throughout the Commonwealth? I'll tell you why. Because they have so much money that they're legally stealing from the taxpayers and school districts. They don't know what to do with it. So to keep their fund balance low, they've spent tens of millions of dollars in real estate that I don't think they need. They say they needed to have meeting spaces for teachers. That's their line. But this is a way to keep the fund balance low, so the spotlight is, is off of them. So reducing that rate to really what it costs them to provide a cyber education is something that's been elusive so far. And quite frankly, with the lobby and the money behind it, in my opinion, it'll be like property tax reform. In twenty years, you'll be talking about this very same topic to come up with a statewide rate. In the meantime, Commonwealth Charter Academy will have a hundred buildings in the next twenty years.
I have a suggestion in case he happens to be watching. Governor Shapiro, you should tab Howie Roseman and start a Department of Government Efficiency at the state level and just cut that funding without much oversight, sort of like we're getting used to here in America. So just a thought if you happen to be watching, sir.
So my plea again is to reach out to our local legislators and encourage support of the statewide tuition rate of eight thousand dollars for the cyber schools. Our friend, Representative Sarisi, he's been before the Finance Committee several times. Perhaps he will be the legislator that develops and initiates and proposes the legislation to have that eight thousand dollar target. But it is once again, a complete fleecing of North Penn School District and every other school district in the state. It's a complete fleecing of the taxpayers. We are overpaying for services, not by a little, by a lot each year. And this is really just to keep the reimbursement to charter schools, cyber schools in line with what their actual costs are. The objective was never to get cyber schools rich and have so much money they now have to buy real estate properties just to keep their balance low, their fund balance low.
Mr. Skrocky, or possibly Dr. Bauer, a point of clarification, it's one thing to pay a lot of money and get something for it. What is the return on investments been for North Penn taxpayers and state taxpayers in general for, as you, as you stated, this taxpayer fleecing, this legal fleecing?
So I would say that if, if student performance at the cyber schools was off the charts, I probably wouldn't be as bold in some of the statements I make. But coupled the fleecing with absolutely horrific student achievement numbers, like we're talking the bottom five, ten percent in the state, couple those two factors together is completely outrageous.
Yeah, every, every metric from attendance to student achievement data to graduation rates is abysmal. So, yeah, I guess.
So it sounds like you've given us all an assignment. So all of us at the table and everyone who's in the audience and tuning in, we have a Mr. Skrocky assignment and that is to call our state legislators and let them know. So thank you.
So the last piece, adding insult to injury, is we did get three hundred and ninety thousand dollars this year and they called it cyber transition funds. So since the legislation didn't pass last year, we got a, a small token, three hundred and ninety thousand dollar cyber transition fund. Well, that money is not being proposed in next year's budget. So that goes away. That was, was fleeting. So if we were able to get the legislation passed with eight thousand dollars, two point two million dollars in savings for the taxpayers here in North Penn School District. Okay, moving on to the audit, RFP update. We did issue the RFP for auditing services. The opening is going to be on February twenty-first. I bring this up tonight because interviews are going to be held on March twenty-first. Last time we went through this process, we did have one board member that participated in the interviews. So I'm just bringing this up to let the committee know if anyone is interested in participating in those interviews. They'll be held from nine AM to two PM on March twenty-first. Just let me know and we'll schedule, schedule you for those interviews. I believe it was Mr. Rush that participated last time, but if there's someone else that might be interested, just let me know. Okay, that gets us to item F. Under information, our student representatives, Shayla and Miranda, thanks for hanging in there. It's your turn now to give the Finance Committee an update.
I don't think we have any questions. Do you?
Okay, the financial reports are posted in board docs and exactly the content, they're summarized. Thank you very much. I think that takes us to public comment.
Okay, before we go to public comment, Mr. Skrocky, I need you to unmute your mic and I would like you to say, North Penn Healthcare Center. Just so, at your last meeting, you've talked about the award-winning tax rebate program. You've talked, you've talked about charter school reform. I need you to say, North Penn Healthcare Center and vexatious requestor. Could you say those two things? So this could be a successful last Finance Committee. No, marked. You gotta be marked. We need to hear.
You forgot one. There's a third one I didn't mention. The award-winning budget budget-
Budget book.
Ten straight years, the award-winning budget book, one of 62 school districts in the entire country. And speaking of vexatious requests.
Okay, here we go.
We have a vexatious requestor in this school district that, over a five-year period, has submitted 365 requests, costing the school district a lot of money in time, that's for sure. A vexatious requestor, for sure. And very proud of our healthcare center. Continues to be of great interest to other school districts, not only in Montgomery County, but throughout the state. So I want to thank the board one last time for your support of the healthcare center, because if it wasn't for your support, that never would have happened. And what, one of the many things that makes North Penn a great place is the culture of innovation. And that doesn't happen without the board's support. The board supports innovation at North Penn School District, and that's why many schools look to North Penn as the flagship. They want to know, if North Penn is doing it, it's okay for us. But that's all about the culture of innovation and dreaming big. So thank you to the board for allowing all those things I just mentioned. It's really only possible, not from administration, it's possible because of the school board, so thank you.
So I have personally had a few opportunities to publicly thank Mr. Scrocky for his service for the school, to the school district. Steve, I also want to publicly thank you just for being a colleague, a mentor, and a friend. I have been here, I'm going on, I guess, 11 years at this point. I have worked with Steve my entire time here in the school district. And I am very, very fortunate, not only to have worked with you, but to call you a friend. Our board directors also have some things that they would like to say to you. And with that, I would like to ask everyone to turn their attention to the screens. And that concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you, President McMertry.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer, and now Mr. Scrocky.
All right, thank you, Madam President. So on the movie lot.
Dearest Mr. Scrocky, sound steward of taxpayer resources and support.
Mission-driven leader.
Defender against vexatious requestors. An innovative leader who cares not only about the bottom line, but also for our school personnel's health and wellbeing.
Juggler of accounts, requests, and priorities.
Skilled community educator, making large-scale budgets and taxation relatable to the North Penn community.
Dedicated sports fan who has more awards than his favorite teams combined.
Our North Penn Chief Financial Officer and soon-to-be-retiring.
We gather here tonight to commemorate your final Finance Committee meeting before you commute west into the sunset. To mark this occasion, we could not resist the opportunity to send you off with a final well wish noting our gratitude for your years of service to our North Penn community.
An annual highlight of our Finance Committee meetings were the times when you would read the handwritten thank you note sent to your office by a member of our community who had just received their tax rebate check. In the spirit of the North Penn resident and the joy-sharing person, which meant a lot to all of us, we are hereby reading our note of thanks to you.
Thank you for teaching our community how to properly use the word vexatious in a sentence. Little did you know that you have been supporting SAT prep for our students.
Thank you for breaking down the $322 million budget in a way that helps school board directors and our community better understand how we fund the vital work of supporting our 13,000 students and 2,500 school personnel. Through our monthly Finance Committee meetings, you've guided us along with our community, and we've been attentive students. And you've made complex financial details more accessible. We truly appreciate your clarity and dedication, and will carry these lessons forward.
Steve, you have made the financial management of our district so relatable. I mean, how many business managers in Montgomery County can say they have their own community-generated means?
Thank you for modeling leadership for our students and community, showing us all that matching fiscal prudence with student needs and innovations in education is possible and is worth the work. From you, we've learned that all we really need is patience, persistence, and some really sweet slides with like all-black background and a little white text.
Did we mention the award-winning budget book? Thank you so much for achieving excellence.
Thank you for supporting efforts that will continue to serve all North Penn residents. Our students, school personnel, and all residents have benefited from your efforts. From the innovative health center, to our long-term planning to support continuous maintenance of our facilities, ensuring that our students have access to tasty meals, our buses run safely, efficiently, and cleanly. We thank you.
End of report, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scrocky.
And thank you, Mr. Gilmer, of course.
So, and thank you for, thank you, Steve, for everything. It really has been an incredible experience getting to learn from you as a member of the board, so we're so grateful for that. Thank you, Mr. Gilmar, for helping us pull that together. We really appreciate it. Okay, so we'll move on to public comment. I do want to let you know that we're going to have public comment to wrap up the Finance Committee meeting. We will adjourn, and then we will move into our next meeting, and there'll be another opportunity for public comment at that time. We ask the public comment be related to our agenda this evening, if at all possible. And I'll go ahead and I'll read the statement. So individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the committee should be aware that they are being reported. In order to meet the requirements of the Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the committee during this meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the committee state their name and municipality. As a reminder, the public comment portion of this meeting is designated for residents and taxpayers of the district to provide comment and feedback on matters being discussed at tonight's meeting or matters that may come before the Finance Committee. It is not designated for debate or discussion with members of the committee. When appropriate, committee members may choose to respond to public comments that have been made or request that a member of the administration follow up with the speakers after the meeting. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to three minutes. Good evening, Mr. Patchell.
Oh, yes, start the time. I am ready, and the mic is on. My name is William Patchell, and I reside in the greatest township in the entire Commonwealth, probably of any state in the United States. I bought there 30 years ago, and as far as, I am extremely happy, and my son and daughter who went through this system did very well. But I tell you, I have a comment on the rebate. Well, what I've been doing, you see, I've been missing a haircut. And I'm going to be able to save maybe more than that rebate that you're talking about. That's almost comical. It's ridiculous. You know what? All this chatter about, it's almost like, oh, they're digging the Panama Canal with tiny beach shovels. That is ridiculous. But I'm glad to see that we do have two students here entering into the political arena. You know, it's very difficult. We have a 27-year-old young lady up there who's fighting the lions as a press secretary for the White House. It isn't easy, so I have to admire that. But one good thing, they will not have to swim against, or have any athlete who is a transgender, you won't have to deal with that. So I applaud whatever they're doing right now in that area. Okay, student loans. Oh, got a 1.5 trillion. I hope they help you figure that out. Doesn't look very good. Okay, AI will probably be removing a lot of jobs, so it could be more difficult than what your guidance counselor talked about. And all the board members, yes, they all own high-value homes, $700,000, $800,000. You know, it's always good to be at the top of the heap because the view is very good. All this sounds like, I don't know what. Oh, well, the school, the, whoa, oh, one minute. I've got plenty of time. Well, we just passed 25% tariffs on steel, 25% on aluminum. I think those design plans that Schrader Group, I call them the Schraders of the lost budget. And gee, oh, the plans, all this stuff went through the roof. When you get that thing, those plans are DOA, dead on arrival, and they won't be worth a dime. Now, Dr. Bauer said, well, we're going to do this thing in, well, six years, I believe you said. Well, the number was 300, 300 million, which is, I don't know. You need 50 million every year. What I said, why don't you just do one thing, work it out of the budget? And Mr. Scrocky did say something very, very good. Don't borrow any money and pay for it cash. Then we'll find something else. Stop looking for the big enchilada. It's ridiculous.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell. Anyone else like to make public comment?
Jason Lanier Lansdale. I was listening to the presentation by Zach Trump. He was talking about federal funding and mentioned ESSA-related payments that are made to the school district. And he said those are not yet in the crosshairs. I think they're going to be in the crosshairs. And I know that dates way back to 1964, but that's going to change. And it's going to change because there's been an implementation of directing money not for its intended purposes in the education system. This speaks really to two things. One is why the cost of public education is so high, and it dovetails with why people are sending their kids to cyber charter at the expense that it is. You guys are doing things that are not in the makeup of public education. You're going far beyond what you should be doing. And it's, so when you look at the budget that you guys have, that I took a look at, it's basically you have 11 million more in revenue budgeted and about the equal amount in expenditures for next year. So for what? We're increasing some things. I saw the one thing that made sense is there's going to be more VOTEC school. Looks like that's going to go up about $4 million bucks, maybe, if I didn't misread that? I mean, okay, what's the other millions are going towards? We spend a lot of money on things that we shouldn't be doing. Like, a minor one is the healthcare center. One of your, I don't remember who spoke about getting over-the-counter medications at the healthcare center. Why is the public paying for over-the-counter medication? I don't understand that. I don't know how much that is, but that just seems like, why are we doing that? The curriculum and education, we have, I don't know how many admins who are paid to do curriculum education, and then how many millions do we spend on having contractors come in here to give us advice on curriculum and education? Why do we have these two expenditures? Why do we pay for lots of outside influence on our education system while we also pay for administrators here? I don't understand. It seems we're spending a lot in excess of where we need to be. So maybe trim down the budget, so when those dollars go away federally, you actually can do what your charge is, which is to educate kids, not to teach them about their sexuality or doing SEL and using that as data mining to decide how you can get more money for kids who might have some kind of disability. Do what you're supposed to do. Tailor the budget to educate kids, not to use it as a political whomping tool to get future Democrats to vote for you. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Hey, so moving on. Moving on, our next Finance Committee meeting will be on, I should say, our next Finance Committee meeting without Mr. Scrocky will be on Tuesday, February 18th. That is a special meeting for the budget. Actually, you will be at that one? Or no? Okay, fine, virtual. And then the next one will be on March 11th at 6:00 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Okay, we'll take a little bit of a break, let Mr. Gilmer reset, and then we'll reconvene.